Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Tuesday, January nineteenth. School Board Business Meeting to order. I'd like to start the meeting with reminding everyone that being electronic being electronic means that we are to mute our microphones when we are not speaking. School boards wishing to speak should state their name and then wait to be recognized. I will then call on that board member. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone and speak and then re-mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. The meeting is being recorded and access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. With that, I would like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do I have a motion to call the board meeting?
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Ross. With that, I will call the roll. Ms. Stark?
Present.
Ms. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Carnot?
Here.
Mr. Meisner?
Here.
And Mr. Adam.
Here.
And with that, we will call the meeting to order. Our first order is going to be organization of the board. I am now taking nominations for the board chair position. Do we have a nomination?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Donna Pridoo for the position of board chair.
I will second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I will ask again if there are any other nominations. And one more time, any other nominations? And with no other nominations, we will call the roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And with the majority of the votes, board member Donna Pridoo is the board chair for 2021. I am now taking nominations for the vice chair position.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Ivana Stark as vice chair.
And I will second that nomination. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? A second time, any other nominations? And for a third time, any other nominations? And with no other nominations, we will call the roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Pridoo, I will say aye, and Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And with the majority of the votes, board member Ivana Stark will hold the vice chair position for 2021. And with that, we are now taking nominations for the position of treasurer.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Ross Meisner for treasurer.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Again, any other nominations? And one last time, if there are any other nominations? With no other nominations, I will call the roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Ms. Pridoo, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
With the majority of the votes, board member Ross Meisner is going to be our treasurer for 2021. And we are going to be taking nominations for the clerk position.
Madam Chair, it's my honor to nominate Carol Thornton to be the clerk for the board.
And I will second that nomination. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for the position of clerk? And one last time, any other nominations for the clerk position? With no other nominations, we will call the roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Pridoo is an aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
With the majority of the vote, board member Carol Thornton is now the clerk for 2021. Congratulations, everybody, on your positions for 2021. May it be a better year than last.
A boring year.
Yeah, yay yay. Moving on, I will take a motion for the approval of the January nineteenth. The January, oh, we already did that. We did a oh, no, we didn't. So I will take a motion for approval to call the agenda. This agenda. Maybe it's not such a great year. Is there an open motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Ivana, seconded by Carol Thornton to approve the agenda for the January nineteenth, 2021 meeting. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Pridoo is an aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And that passes. I would like to move on. Dr. Heil will talk on our spotlight of recognition, Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Pridoo and school board members. With pleasure, I announce Employee of the Month for January of 2021 is Beth Garnary. Beth is the current kitchen manager at Fridley Middle School and has been in the role for over five years. Since last March, the world of school nutrition has been significantly changed, and Beth has played a key role in the success of the Nutritional Services Department. Being flexible, adaptable, and quick on her feet are some of the qualities that continue to shine as we need to adapt and find new ways to feed and reach out to our students and to our community. Beth is very compassionate, knowledgeable, and resilient, which shows as she leads her team at Fridley Middle School and supports feeding our students both in distance learning and in-person learning. She has a positive attitude, collaborates with others to solve problems, and continues to work with her team to provide the best service possible to our students. We are so lucky to have her as part of our team. I want to thank her for all of her hard work and dedication to our department and students. Congratulations to Beth. This is written by Renee Arbergas and Sarah Suppley from the Nutritional Services Department.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to move on to superintendent and staff reports. And it looks like we have a presentation from Karen Beckstrand and Mr. Dr. Jason Bodie.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair and Board. Yeah, so Karen and I are here to discuss how our preschool has been going this year and also to walk you through our authorization process. As you all know, we were recently approved through IB for a PYP preschool site in our Fridley Community Center, which is super exciting. And it's been several years in the making, but even despite a pandemic, we found a way to do it. And so Karen and I are going to kind of bounce back and forth and explain the process. So Karen, do you want to say hello and introduce yourself?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you.
All right. So on this first slide, you can see on the far right side, it's a little small, but there's a blue, what we call, it kind of looks like a pinwheel or the swirl, we've referred to it as. And there's four areas there that, the central features of the early years. And Karen will talk about that more, but that is a logo that you may see coming up from time to time. It's a newer logo in the IB world regarding specifically the early years. And I won't say any more than that because Karen's got a whole part on that later on, but just recall that wheel, that pinwheel, when you see it later on, so. All right, we can move on to the next slide. So Fridley Preschool has become one of the primary entry points into Fridley Public Schools as well as a lot of the other opportunities that we have at the community center. And we see that probably close to half of our kindergartners right now went through preschool in Fridley. And as our numbers continue to grow and as we're able to expand it with the state providing more funding for it, we're looking to have even more than half at some point of our incoming kindergartners being right from our own Fridley preschool. We're going to be talking about some highlights about our program here in the next few slides. Like I had mentioned, IB's in the early years, if you can remember that, that kind of blue spiral. And then go through our authorization processes and the next steps that we see and where we need to go with Fridley preschool. So first of all, the highlights. So over the past two years, we've really come together as a staff because we've also had all the people in the right positions too. It's taken some time to get the right staffing in place to really be a school. We're really not a program anymore. We're a full-on school. And, you know, it took some time to figure out what did we need, how did we fit into the community center, and what kind of staffing do we need to make this happen? And so we've expanded several roles. Specifically this year, the classroom assistant role has really expanded and taken on a lot more responsibility. And those are the staff members that work alongside our teachers. And they are just as important as our teachers in those classrooms because they really help keep the day going and help our students learn. We're also really fortunate to receive the MSAP grant. It's a magnet program grant. We were awarded that in the fall of 2018. And with that grant, we've been able to provide staffing. We've been able to buy a lot of materials. And one of my and Karen and I's main goals is to really create equity across our classrooms to make sure that it doesn't matter which teacher you have. All the materials and all the items and the books are going to be the same in the classrooms, and we're going to have all the same materials. So we've done a really good job of doing that over the last couple of years and purchasing items through the grant. So a lot of books, and we've really focused also on books that represent our kids. And they have a variety of cultural backgrounds and family backgrounds, different languages, really honoring that mother tongue. Kids don't take another language until they get into first grade, I believe, in Fridley. So we, for us, we really focus just on honoring the home language. And we bought a lot of manipulatives and things to really reinforce the play-based learning and inquiry-based learning that IB requires. And so Karen will talk more about that in a few minutes. And exciting this year, we've really, we've done a more more purposeful and more intentional partnering with our childcare in the building. And so now we have students who, we've had students, four-year-olds in the past, who were in full-day care. But what we noticed in the data that we looked at last year, we noticed a lot of kids really struggled shifting from being at school in the morning in their childcare and then shifting over to preschool and then shifting back to childcare. And they were moving back and forth between different adults and different environments and different rooms. And we were able to identify that that was not, that was an adult thing. We needed to make sure we're doing better for our kids. And so we brought the half-day preschool into the full-day childcare and really have partnered with them. And so it's a combination, it's a tag team now. And the students don't have to transition out of the room, the adults transition to them, which makes a lot more sense. So those are just a few highlights over the last year of things that have been going on in the preschool. And I'll let Karen hop over and start talking about PYP in the preschool.
All right. Again, good evening. Lori, we can just, yep, thank you. So prior to 2018, when the new Principles to Practice was published by the IB, there was not a whole lot of information for early childhood and preschool in there. And so when that was published in 2018, there was a whole nice section for early childhood and early preschool learning that really focuses a lot on the ages of three to six and what play and inquiry should look like. There's a really nice table that they laid out of like how, what it should shift away from and shift to. And a lot of that, the main focus of that is like, there's a lot of co-constructed between student and teacher. And so it's just, it's just a really nice document that we've dug into over the past couple of years and kind of made that as our guiding beacon as we've been on this journey. And the four pillars that Jason referred to and what we belovedly call our swirl are the sorry, the aspects of play, relationships, the learning spaces, and then the symbolic exploration and expression. And we spent a lot of time digging into play already. And hopefully, once we come out of this world that we're in right now, we can kind of go back and do the same with relationships and learning, the learning spaces, and that symbolic exploration expression. The one highlight that we have coming up is, of course, right now, there is no travel for IB. And a part of the IB is to continue to expand the knowledge of your teachers and your staff in the IB. And so we've actually been able to purchase a training for all of our staff to participate in that will be done in an online format. And we're going to really spend time digging into those four pillars in the month of March with our staff. So I'm very excited that even though we can't go anywhere, we can continue to offer this ongoing training for our staff. So Lori, if you want to go to the next slide, please? So again, the other key aspects, like as most of you guys know, it's just that play-based learning inquiry, that taking action and agency. And the one thing that I'm very proud of the staff at the FCC is that we've really worked on incorporating those very basic entry points to understand the IB, which is the learner profile, into all aspects. So whether a child is in childcare, they're with us, all the teachers, all the staff are using those learner profile words. And then that, of course, goes into the common language that we have going on. So very proud of the work that they've done there. And then nobody really wants to do an IB authorization in the middle of a global pandemic, but we did not want to push it off yet again because we were rescheduled basically twice. And so we had our virtual visit in October. And there was a lot of uploading of things into a Google file of pictures and schedules and planners and all sorts of stuff that front-loaded the visit. And then we worked across, as you can see there, we worked across three different time zones. One of our evaluators was in the Carolinas, one was out in Las Vegas, and then we, of course, were all here. And there are many moving pieces that we had to bring together, which you can see on the side there of everybody that was involved with this. So everything from the pedagogical leadership of Dr. Heil and John Petrowski, Jason and myself, and then all of our support staff, parents, the whole IB coordinators were all in on this because of, we want to talk now of how we have the continuum, pre-K, all the way up to DP CP. So it was a really good visit. And then on the next slide, please, Lori? The one really proud moment that I have with this is that when our final report came back to us, we had no matters to be addressed. So everything came back with either a recommendation or accommodation. And as you can see there, those were just a few of the commendations that we received. And the recommendations that we have, of course, then roll into our next five years for our next steps with our action plan. So we have continued growth with our staff at the FCC in the IB and the PYP. That's all I have for right there, and we'll continue on with a few other things. So Jason?
Yeah, so as Karen mentioned, we're really proud that we didn't have any matters to be addressed. And there's a lot of commendations and then a handful of recommendations. And those recommendations are things that we need to think about over the next several years before we have to be reauthorized. And so there's nothing we have to do tomorrow, but these are the areas that we want to look at over the next several years. And these were some of the recommendations they gave us and some things that we've kind of taken away from the visit. One is just to continue to develop and study play-based and inquiry-based learning. We have a good start, but there's a lot to learn, and there's a lot more that we can learn from the IB and through these trainings that Karen was referring to. And then learning just how to, as a staff, come together and collaborate to think of ways to best do that with our youngest learners. And then, yes, the professional development piece is, we need to continue that. That's just one of those things that IB has you do is continue your development and continue learning about IB and how to be IB educators. So we're going to be, we were reviewing the My IB platform online with our teachers just this last week, showing them where there's some additional resources for them to look on their own. And then like Karen said, we were able to get a virtual training arranged through IB, which is it's going to be really good because it also will afford our, beyond our teachers, our classroom staff, our special ed staff, everyone who works in our program is able to participate in that, which is really nice. And then we need to go back and look at our language and assessment policies. We have them and we wrote them, and they were part of the the visit, but kind of look at it from an early childhood lens and look at it through a preschool lens, not just a full district lens. We should, we'll need to go back and just review that a little bit closer. And then looking at our planners, going into a new format, we held off on changing our formats. The elementary moved forward and changed some of their formatting of their planners that, you know, no one would see on the other side, but it's really the planning side for the teachers. And we're going to work on doing that. And we've done a lot of work over the last couple of years of looking at our curriculum and aligning it to the ESIPS, which are the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress for Minnesota. So those are the Minnesota standards for early childhood. And looking at our TS Gold, that's our newer assessment that we started using last year. That's the assessment tool for preschool. So what we've done is we've taken our curriculum, we've taken the ESIPS, and then we've taken the TS Gold, and we've created a document that crosses all three of those, so you see where they all connect. So as we do our planners, what we want to do is embed more of that information in the planner, so we know how it all connects within the planner as well. And then Karen, do you want to talk about the last one there, the last bullet point or the last, I guess, post-it note?
Yeah. And so as Jason alluded to, the elementaries and some of the other places have already transferred their things. And so what I'm working with, especially now with Kate Talifus at Stevenson and Kirsten Wickman at Haze is, and even beyond that, is we're really looking at that vertical alignment now too. As we have, we don't want to have our kids coming into elementary and then they get a repeat. We don't want to maybe miss something. So that expanded POI, we'll look at that. That's the program of inquiry, where we'll embed more things like the learner profile, expand a couple of things, maybe look at some SEL things and all of that. So that's in the works. The other thing that was a recommendation that had already been on my radar was how can we transfer what our students are doing at the preschool up to the elementaries, especially if they stay in district? The elementaries use a Google portfolio for all of their students. And so we're kind of piloting it now with teachers are kind of messing around with it. I made some for them for this year and then looking at that. But that would just be then a Google portfolio that can roll, and I can roll those to Haze or to Stevenson, to Kate or to Kirsten there. And then to create an internal PYP Google site where we'll house a lot of this. Haze and Stevenson have those as well. And so again, we want to keep that vertical alignment there. So looking at doing that. I'm just, I'm very excited for the work that we have done, the work that we'll continue to do, and to just truly be the first pre-K authorized program in the state of Minnesota. If not, we don't know of any others out there. So we know for sure in Minnesota. But thank you for letting us present to you tonight.
And I'd just like to send out a real, just a quick thank you to Dr. Heil and John Petrowski and Stephen Keeler and the community center. Those three have really helped us quite a bit in this journey. Laura, sorry, you're in there too. You've helped us with the ECSC to really make sure that we've, we have an integrated ECSC program into our preschool. There, what I've learned along the way is that not only just with IB, certainly with IB, but with Fridley Preschool in general, is we are doing it differently than a lot of places are. We don't have these separate, you know, students with IEPs that have special needs, don't go sit in a room by themselves. They're integrated right in there with our other students. And we really are doing some things that aren't happening in other places. And so we're really proud of that. And I just want to thank the leadership team at the district level. I want to thank Karen. Karen Beckstrand is an amazing coordinator, and I couldn't do it without her. And so, well done, Karen, and well done, team. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I wanted to thank both of you and thank all of your team members. You're doing a wonderful job. I know Mr. Adam said also in the little comments that how much he appreciates, and I know we all do, starting with the little ones all the way up. So to be pre-K all the way through is just an amazing accomplishment. So you guys are doing wonderful. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Congratulations. That's a great accomplishment. Very, very impressive. Thanks for sharing that.
All right, we'll let you guys off the hook. Thank you.
I was typing my comment in, but thank you to all you guys for that. Sorry, I can speak faster than I can type. So great job, great work on that, you guys.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the support.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to our business action items. We're going to start with a resolution accepting gifts. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 463.03, I'm sorry, 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary for a total of $665. Fridley United Methodist Women and Presbyterian Church of the Way in Shoreview. The following persons donated to the Haze Elementary School for a total of $455. And Lori has 10 cents, I have 40, so one of the two would be anonymous donors and Fridley United Methodist Women. The following persons donated to the Fridley Middle School for a total of $70. Stephanie Sharp, Kaisha, and Wendy Jong. The following persons donated to Fridley High School for a total of $200. Judge James and Mary Gibbs. And then we have a huge list of gifts of persons who donated to the Fridley High School Band Program for a grand total of $1,019.26. I will not read through all of them, but you can see we have two dozen plus people who donated to the Fridley High School Band Program. So is there a motion to accept all of those gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, seconded by, was that Carnot? Yep. Okay, perfect. And we will call the roll. So Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Ms. Pridoo, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And with no other discussion, that passes. We're going to move on to school board organization and our annual authorizations for 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thornton, seconded by Stark to approve the school organization and annual authorizations for 2021. I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Pridoo is aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Next, we're going to have a second reading and adoption of policies, policy 423. And is that going to be Mr. Isaacson?
Yes, by all means. The first reading of policy 423. Director of Teaching and Learning, John Petrowski, and I partnered to make changes to the policy to add coherence by cleaning up the language, eliminating redundancies, and ensuring our practices are reflected in the document. We shared the ACP plan with you last year. The policy's been updated to reflect those changes throughout the document. Likewise, it's been updated to ensure that teacher evaluation occurs regardless of classroom assignment. Moreover, in the area relating to unsatisfactory evaluation ratings, we clarified and cleaned up language in this section and substituted the term improvement plan in place of remediation plan. And then finally, we've stricken the section D relating to non-tenderness staff. And then finally, we've stricken the section D relating to non-tenured staff. That information is redundant and it's covered in section. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ike, that was, uh, we actually needed the second reading for policy four twenty-three, employee-student relationships.
Well, I skipped the wrong one. Uh, in summary then, as to the other one, there are no changes whatsoever since the first reading.
Awesome. Well, now you're just two for one. Okay. So does anyone, um, will someone like to make a motion to approve the second reading without any changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Um, Meisner with a motion and seconded by Stark. Um, any discussion? No. So I will call the roll. Mr. Adam? You're muted. Very. Thank you. Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Peruido is an aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda and we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda of routine action items, including minutes of the regular school board meeting, the work session held on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty, work session held on January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, lane changes, leads of the absence, terminations, resignations, retirements, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Fridley High School, um, Registration Guide. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, seconded by Adam and
That was Carnot, actually.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Jay Carnot and Mr. Adam.
Fridley High School, um, Registration Guide. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Meisner?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Peruido, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And now we'll move on to written information and first readings. Um, Mr. Isaacson has already shared with us. So thank you for policy four eighty-nine, Evaluation of Certified Staff. So we can move right on to, um, Ms. Barbie for a lot of policies.
Oh, yay. Okay. Uh, so Chair Peruido, Dr. Heil, and Board Members, um, for the first reading of, uh, policy number seven zero one point one. This is actually a, um, policy that, uh, refers to the modification of school district budget. As you know, we do have to approve our adopted budget prior to July first of each school year. Um, and another, um, uh, requirement that we have through G A S B thirty-four is that we also have to have an amended budget each, uh, school year. So we have our adopted and amended. This policy speaks directly to the amended budget and, um, how that process should work. This is a language that's taken directly from M S B A and their, uh, policy recommendations. The next policy that we have is number seven zero four, and this is the development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. Uh, this policy was originally adopted in two thousand nine and we are basically cleaning up the language. We're simplifying, uh, the language that was in our prior, um, policy. Uh, it does reflect the, um, M S B A's, uh, policy. And again, it just simply summarizes the data in a much more succinct fashion. The next policy is number seven zero five, the Investment of School District Funds. Um, again, this is, uh, the, uh, policy before you is simply updating wording. Um, the, uh, intent of the policy remains the same. It's just, uh, simplifying some of the information that's provided in the policy, again, following the M S B A model. And we also have added a section regarding internal controls, which is, um, incredibly important for us to ensure that we have in all of our policies, uh, anything, uh, relating to anything fiduciary. So, um, it's, it's quite lengthy, but, um, when we have it cleaned up, it'll be a lot shorter. The next policy then is number seven zero seven, and that's Transportation of Public School Students. And the main, um, uh, change to this particular policy is just the addition of the statutes that we've cited, the statutes, um, for each section that is within this policy. And again, this follows the M S B A, um, model.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. We will look forward to second readings on those. Um, thank you so much. And we'll move on to reports from School Board Members. Um, Dr. Kim Heil, um, attended M S S, M S D A? A M S D A. Too many acronyms.
Thank you, Chair Peruido and School Board Members. The A M S D Legislative Session Preview was held on January eighth. Um, the agenda consisted of welcoming and introducing the individual legislators that were present at the meeting. A M S D, uh, shared their platform in three areas. Lieutenant Tucci Osorio shared, uh, school finance and working committee information. I myself shared information in regards to closing the opportunity gap with shortages around teachers and shortages around the staff of color. And so Lieutenant Redman from Chocopee, uh, shared information on stabilizing education funding. We also had Governor Walz, Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, and M D E Commissioner Mary Catherine Ricker also spoke. And then we also had some questions and answers from a legislative leadership panel, which represented Representative Melissa Hortman, who is Speaker of the House, Representative Ron Kresha, who's a House Republican Caucus, Senator Paul Gazelka, the Senate Majority Leader, and, um, Senator Susan Kent, the Senate Minority Leader. So they, uh, shared issues around their priorities for the upcoming season. Thank you. Session. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the next meeting, Carol Thornton, please.
Hey, hi, thank you. So this C meeting was held on January eighth and we have some new C, um, business partners. And it was recognized and they are Captivate Media and Consulting, Site Logic, RV Business, Minnesota Propane Services, and Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Um, the first speaker we have was Boyce Olson, who is a nationally known, um, political pundit who has been covering Minnesota politics for many, many years now. Um, his take, he feels that education is a value that Minnesota Republicans and Democrats will be able to work together on. Um, he talked about there's, uh, lots of Senate and House has a lot of policy differences. Um, those he named were marijuana, voter I D, guns and taxes. And of course, he feels like this is going to be a big issue this year for the budget. Um, he said to prepare for a marathon and not a sprint. Um, and think predicting that it will be going into a special session is most likely into the summer. Um, next we had Representative Ruth Richardson. She discussed her priorities. Um, and some of those she, she mentioned or to continue work, work on racial justice, um, working on the systemic racism, racism and disparities, eliminating disciplines disparities, especially indigenous and black students are expelled or suspended more than white students, um, focusing on all students reading by age eight. Expanding school-based community supports for families and students to have that full wraparound support. Um, mental health, increasing mental health support for students and families. Increase the driver license attainment by requiring schools to offer driver education. Um, and attracting and recruiting, um, teachers of color. Um, and also to increase alternative paths to prepare students for other alternative, um, um, opportunities rather than a four-year college, um, education. Next, we had Senator Roger Chamberlain, um, discussed his priorities, um, which is getting students back into the schools for in-person learning and and activities, increasing literacy of students, um, increasing getting mental health supports to fa, to students and families, expanding school choice, focusing on accountability through M C A testing and increasing equalization to reduce costs for school levies. Um, these were some of the highlights and the next C meeting will be held via Zoom on February twelfth from nine thirty to eleven thirty.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of information. We really appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to Northeast Metro nine sixteen. Ms. Stark? You are muted.
I've been so good about that all night too. We met on January thirteenth. Uh, we confirmed, um, our Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk and Treasurer for the two thousand uh, twenty-one school year. We went over the M S B A Leadership Conference that was held virtually on the fourteenth and, um, discussed a restorative training that was held for staff also on the fourteenth via Zoom. We went over the superintendent search with Ken La Croix from Educational Consulting Services. Uh, he spoke to the School Board about the upcoming search and, um, talked about the timeline and what we were really looking for as far as skills and characteristics for a new superintendent. Um, he's also talking to our member district superintendents, the nine sixteen cabinet members and the unions to gather their input on desired skills and characteristics. We went through our audit report for the nineteen twenty school year and they found no internal deficiencies or instances of non-compliance with laws and regulations. So that was good news. Also approved, um, a policy related to crisis management. We approved the withdrawal of agreement with Washington County School Districts for, um, working with the Emily Program, and that's because the Emily Program has pulled out of that part of the state. We, um, approved some committee assignments and then went over the two thousand twenty-one legislative platform. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for either one or all three? If not, we will move on to our important future school board dates, which is the, uh, Joint Powers Meeting taking place January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Our Fridley Public Schools Board Work Session will take place February second, two thousand twenty-one. The next Northeast Metro nine sixteen meeting will be February third. The next A M S D Board Meeting, February, um, fifth, two thousand twenty-one. The next C meeting, like Carol mentioned, is going to be February twelfth, apparently via Zoom. Um, our next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And if there is no other discussion, we could go ahead and, um, adjourn if there was a motion.
Motion, move to adjourn.
Um, was that Adam and Thornton? Okay. And, um, just to make sure, we'll call that roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnot?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Peruido is an aye. Ms. Stark? You're still muted.
Your day's almost over.
Almost done. And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Um, any other discussion, any other conversation? Um, if not, we are adjourning at eight thirteen. Thank you, everybody. Be safe and, uh, we'll see you soon.